Good evening. The September 26th meeting of the City Council will come to order with the clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Newsma.
Here.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
Councilmember Saffordin.
Here.
Councilmember Revell.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Herakakis.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Present.
Councilmember Winn.
Mayor Biss.
Here. We have a full complement and are prepared to do our work for the evening. The first item on our agenda is my public announcements and proclamations. There are three proclamations. The first, which I will just mention, is a proclamation declaring this Saturday, September 30th, the Warren Billy Cherry Scholarship Fund Family of Scholars Day. The reason I won't go into more detail is that we'll be celebrating that anniversary at a dinner that I hope all are aware of and hope all will join me at. And I'll be presenting the proclamation and reading it both for the scholars, the supporters of the scholarship and the community on that occasion. But many thanks and congratulations to them for really remarkable work that they've done over the course of these 30 years in honor and memory of someone who was a beloved community member and educator. Councilmember Reed?
I just want to highlight the great work of the scholarship. I was actually a scholar. I guess if it's only been 30 years, then I was amongst the first cohort. And so I am grateful for the education that I received at Warren Cherry or at Cherry
Councilmember Newsma.
My kids went to Cherry Preschool as well. Love the place. If they could be in preschool forever, that's the preschool I'd want them in. I do not know how to interpret that.
Councilmember Kelly?
As did my younger son. Had a really wonderful education at Cherry Preschool. Thank you.
This brings us now to a proclamation in celebration of the DND Finer Foods 50th anniversary. So whereas brothers Tom and Pete Duvikas came to the United States in 1955 from a small town in Greece, Nistani, where the main occupation was farming and keeping herds of sheep, and whereas the Duvikas brothers worked at hot dog stands and grocery stores, including Jewel, National, and Dominique's, but longed to open their own store. And whereas on October 5th, 1973, they decided to venture out and open DND Finer Foods Store, relocate it to 825 Nois Street, and in 1986, open DND Dogs adjacent to the store. And whereas DND Finer Foods is a neighborhood specialty grocery store that has expanded over the years and become a Nois Street institution. And whereas Tom Duvikas now partners with his son Costa to manage the business. And whereas DND Finer Foods offers a variety of gourmet products, including homemade dishes made on the premises, hot and cold deli sandwiches, hormone and steroid free meat and poultry, and a wide selection of craft beer wines and spirits. Now therefore, I do hereby proclaim October 5th, 2023, as DND Finer Foods Day in the city of Evanston in recognition of their 50th anniversary. And my understanding is there's someone here from the family to accept this. So please come forward and accept our congratulations and applause.
Thank you. I'd just like to make a short comment. I'm just so glad that we are recognizing DND Foods as such a longstanding, important member of the Evanston community as a legacy business. They, the Duvikas family and DND have contributed in such significant ways, both economically and culturally, to become an iconic partner of the neighborhood and in the community. Their focus on serving both customers and the community so successfully for so many years makes them worthy recipient of this recognition. And also important to add, they provide lots of fun. As stated, they will be celebrating their 50th anniversary on a week from this Thursday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from 3:00 until 7:00 with lots of great activities planned. And I know that the Costa and the DND staff will be very happy to see you and help them celebrate 50 wonderful years. Thank you.
Thank you. And my understanding is the final proclamation will be received by a member of City Council. Is that correct? So this is in celebration of the 90th anniversary of the Ladies Auxiliary of Second Baptist Church. Whereas the Ladies Auxiliary of Second Baptist Church, formerly known as the Live Wires, was organized, why change that name? Was organized in 1933 with a membership of 12 young energetic couples. And whereas for many years, its primary project was fundraising to assist with church maintenance, and they've donated many church furnishings. And whereas fundraising events included recitals, bake sales, luncheons, boat cruises, bazaars, banquettes, teas, and fashion shows, having raised monies not only to support the church but also scholarship funds. And whereas in 1973, the Ione S. Brown Memorial Scholarship Fund was established to provide financial support for worthy church members accepted into college. And in 1996, the Ione S. Brown Memorial Endowment Fund, as well as an annual scholarship day to recognize student achievements, were also established. As of June 2023, scholarships have been awarded to nearly 230 students, and recipients have worked in diverse fields such as education, medicine, ministry, business, government, and social services. And whereas the Beacon of Light Scholarship was established in 2021 to provide support for students at the community. Now therefore, I do hereby proclaim October 8th, 2023, as the Ladies Auxiliary of Second Baptist Church 90th year and the 50th year of the Ione S. Brown Memorial Scholarship Fund Day in observance of the many accomplishments provided the church and the Evanston community over the years. Thank you so much and congratulations. The September 26th City Council meeting will resume. I want to apologize to any community member who heard or saw any of what just occurred. We do our best to keep these meetings free of that kind of attack and abuse, and I know that it can be really painful for some people. So we'll continue to try our best. And I want to thank our IT team and Anderson in particular for the work you do. We have a stroke of good fortune. As it turns out, there's nobody this evening seeking to give public comment via Zoom, so we're not going to have to let people into the Zoom, though it will still be running for purposes of recording. And with that, I appreciate everyone's patience as we figure out the proper way to handle this situation and will move forward. Before concluding my public announcements, I do want to additionally announce that we are in the midst of Hispanic Heritage Month, which runs from the middle of September through the middle of October. The city has a number of events planned, and there are other community events planned as well to celebrate our Latinx community and their contributions to Evanston. And so I would just encourage everyone to look up those events, participate, and be a part of the various events. That concludes my public announcements and proclamations. Next on the agenda is the City Manager's public announcements.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, and member of the City Council, Clerk Mendoza. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for, members of EPD, for being here this evening. Very briefly, we're going to turn it over to Joy Norris, our cultural arts coordinator, and Melissa Malator, for a brief announcement on an exciting event happening next weekend.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much, City Manager Stowe, for making the time for us to talk about cultural arts in Evanston. Again, my name is Joy Norris. I'm the cultural arts coordinator. And beside me is Chair of the Arts Council, Melissa Roman-Malator. We would like to discuss some exciting events that we have coming up this month and going into the end of the year. On October 8th, Sunday at 3:00 PM, we will be unveiling the bronze bust of Jean Baptiste Point du Sabl, which has been a long time coming project. It was commissioned years ago by Leslie Benadine, who was a member of the Haitian community in Evanston, who unfortunately passed in 2019. In commission, sculptor Eric Blum, who is internationally known for his beautiful bronze sculptures around the world. But fortunately, we will be able to have Mr. Benadine's daughter to attend the unveiling, and we'll be able to honor his legacy at the unveiling. We will also have catering from Kins and Creole. We'll have speakers there from the Haitian-American community and Mayor Biss. And we're really excited to unveil this at the corner of Church and Orington at the Evanston Public Library, the main branch. Coming from that, we will, we have opened up the call for nominations for the Mayor's Awards for the Arts, which will result in a celebration of a bright night of the arts that will take place on Wednesday, November 15th at, yeah, 6:00 PM at the UBAK Theater, which we're really excited about. All of the information for the form to nominate artists and arts organizations in Evanston is on the Arts and Culture website on the city's page. And we're very excited to have everybody share it far and wide, so the breadth of artists and arts organizations that are practicing in Evanston can be recognized and considered for this really wonderful award, which we're in the 45th year of honoring. So it's just wonderful. A lot of other things that we're excited to discuss as we go into the future of looking at arts and culture in Evanston. And I will turn it over to Chair Malator to speak more to that.
Hi. Thank you all for having us here. I am, you're going to be seeing me because I'm going to be getting all of you excited about the arts in Evanston. We have, I think it's the 50th anniversary of the Evanston Arts Council that's coming up in 2025, and I think that we are at a very pivotal point when it comes to the arts and culture in Evanston. We have, I mean, the artists and arts organizations and projects, everything that's going on in our city, it's really incredible, and we really want to make sure that we are highlighting that, supporting that. We are kind of like ramping up to 2025. So we're starting planning now. 2025, in my mind, in my world, is going to be like the year of the arts in Evanston. And so we have a retreat coming up with the Arts Council to start planning for that. We want to activate all of the neighborhoods, as many people as we can, get them involved in art-making and sharing, exhibiting. One of the big goals that we have is to bring back the Lakefront Arts Festival, which hopefully is still part of the conversations around being funded through the Community Benefits Package. But there has been a lot of excitement about the potential of that coming back. And I think it's really important to remember that it's not just about, it is about the arts and celebrating the arts and bringing everyone together through the arts because it's such a community builder. But it's also, it goes a lot deeper than that. The Lakefront Arts Festival, we really want to reimagine it so that it is going to be a way to bring specifically Black and Brown people to the lake, which has been a very difficult thing, especially, you know, as a result of redlining. We really want to try to find ways to get people back to the lakefront. So, but using this through the art, like doing this through the arts. There's a lot of conversations about economic development and how the arts play a role in that, health and human services, how the arts play a role in that. And so I'm hoping that these conversations keep going and that the arts are really recognized as the powerful vehicle that it is for our community. So that's just sort of a teaser. I am going to be coming back with a presentation next month, but very excited, very excited about the arts in Evanston and have this celebration coming up in a year and a half. So thank you.
Thank you, Joy and Melissa. Councilmember Reed?
I just want to say thank you. And I think, Joy, this is your first time in front of the council? Welcome.
And our next item is, we are approaching the one-year anniversary of the swearing-in of Chief Shania Stewart, who is doing an outstanding job and wanted to give her an opportunity to come here tonight and prevent, present a state of the EPD. She has a presentation, and I'll turn it over to Chief Stewart.
Good evening, Mayor Biss, City Manager Luke Stowe, members of the City Council, and Clerk Mendoza. Tonight, I will be speaking about the current state of the Evanston Police Department. It will be highlighting some important information from me as a newly appointed Chief of Police back in October of 2022. This presentation will briefly cover five main topics: crime trends, current staffing, community engagement, notable accomplishments, and where we're going. Having been hired in mid-October of 2022, I've chosen to reference November 1st, 2022 through August 31st, 2023 for all information unless stated otherwise. Overall, there has been a slight downward trend in crime. Calls of service do not include any self-initiated officer activity and simply tracks responses to emergency and non-emergency requests for police service. I've implemented online self-reporting. This offers individuals the ease of filing a police report on their own and whenever is most convenient. Additionally, it frees up time for officers to address in-progress incidents while also mitigating our staffing issue. More on that later. Property crimes are up a tick, 1%, while crimes against persons in society are down 4% and 6% respectively. This is in comparison to the same timeframe one year prior. As it relates to crimes against property, in which we've seen a small increase, I want to highlight an example of how I proactively addressed it. This is motor vehicle thefts, a problem issue not unique to Evanston. The charge tracks reported motor vehicle thefts from November 2022 through August 2023 in Evanston. From November through March, Evanston averaged over 26 motor vehicle thefts per month. In March, EPD's intelligence unit coordinated with neighboring agencies to collect data on stolen vehicles and recoveries. They analyzed that data to predict the most likely locations and times for both thefts and recoveries. In early April, the Evanston Police Department Special Operations Group with Intelligence Unit and several patrol officers participated in a three-day motor vehicle theft saturation mission coordinated by the Skokie Police Department, resulting in nine arrests and five recovered stolen vehicles. Evanston's average motor vehicle thefts in the following months, April through August, have dropped to 11. That's a 60% reduction. That's real impact. Gun violence is a topic that has received a lot of attention, including mine. From November 2022 to August 2023, EPD has taken 73 firearms exclusively of gun buyback events. Additionally, two individuals were arrested and charged with first-degree murder. That specific homicide involved the use of firearms. Forty-one individuals have been arrested for unlawful use of a weapon, and two individuals were arrested for robbery involving the use of firearms. I mentioned staffing a moment ago. Prior to my appointment, EPD publicly acknowledged substantial loss in sworn staff. This was also reported by several media outlets. Additionally, the department announced cutbacks in investigative services as a direct result of having fewer detectives. This issue is not unique to the department. I'm sure most of you are aware that it has been happening nationalized, and it's one that demands attention in order to reverse this trend. I want EPD to be a desirable destination for police officers and have been able to increase sworn staff by 5% in less than a year. We're continuing to move forward to replenish our numbers despite having to cope with planned retirements. The reality of onboarding police officers takes times and does not have a 100% success rate. How have we done this? I have proactively addressed recruitment and retention. First, by working with the union boards and HR, we have been able to negotiate a fair contract both for officers and sergeants. Additionally, under the leadership of Deputy Chief Wright and Commander Sullivan, the EPD recruitment team hosted a series of informational sessions. In terms of marketing, we used the Blue Line, leverage our social media to create unique advertisements for distribution and created a hiring webpage for simplified access to information. I'd like to take this time to really acknowledge our city's Human Resource Department. We cannot take full credit. This is a team effort, and the Human Resource Department has done some heavy lifting for us. Thank you to all the staff of the Human Resource Department for assisting us with our staffing needs. We will continue these efforts to rebuild the department. We developed a community relations unit, which is comprised of community policing unit, school resource officers, and the newly created community engagement and outreach unit. I specifically want the SROs to fall under this unit to act as a mechanism of community relations engaged with the youth in a more restorative manner. The community policing unit will continue to operate working within wards addressing quality of life issues, attending ward meetings, and attending events. The CEO is tasked with facilitating programs, coordinating events, recruiting, building relationship with stakeholders, to name a few. Of their many areas of work, one example is the development of the community survey that will be available soon. It hopes to capture feedback focused on safety and policing in Evanston. I'm encouraging all community members, residents, and businesses to provide their feedback. These are some of the projects the community relations unit has worked on. Displaying the Police Department's Transparency Page recently is difficult for me to decide where to discuss during this presentation because it has so many offerings. It's developed and maintained by the members of the Community Engagement and Outreach Unit, so I'll include a few broad brushstrokes of crime statistics, mapping, community programs, department policies, workforce demographics, recruitment information, department programs. I could go on and on. It's very easy to navigate and translate to numerous languages. The Transparency Page offers robust information on many topics. Here is an example of a customizable crime map. This particular screenshot is for the month of August. It's been manually filtered to show fraud, drug offenses, robbery, and motor vehicle thefts. I want to thank the city's GIS specialists for assisting with the development of this Immediately after my appointment as chief, my goal was to meet and connect with the community. A series of coffee with the chief events were held throughout the city and each ward. The events were hosted at businesses such as Berry Pike, nonprofit agency like Courage Cafe, and community centers. These early events provided a better understanding of what residents wanted from the department. Engagement and respect are key to building and maintaining trust. As you can see, we have been busy. The next several slides are pictures of some of the events we attended throughout the year. In the spring of 2023, the Evanston Police Department hosted its first Spanish-speaking community police academy. The six-week-long program was planned and facilitated by officers Calindo and Herrera and was done completely in Spanish. This was a new, fresh idea that came from officers and community working together. We have relationships with Trilogy Behavior Health that allows for round-the-clock resources to individuals who may need mental health services. Hosting pop-up events allows us the ability to engage with the public and bring awareness to the resources available. We also have a solid relationship with the Foster Senior Club. Officer Adam Howard does a great job of being present and participating in the event with our senior community. I'd like to highlight our accomplishments over the past year. We've really done a superb job in all areas of police work. Despite a department-wide staffing shortage, we have done the very best we can in providing exceptional customer service to our community. Traditionally, the department hosts a gun buyback event each year, while I added another. Addressing gun violence in as many ways as possible is a positive step.
Chief Stewart, do you mind breaking off for a moment?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for being here. We appreciate it very much. Thank you very much, everybody. We appreciate your presence here. Thank you very much. We appreciate your presence here. You're welcome to stay in the chamber if you maintain decorum. The City Council meeting is going to continue now. I would ask you to remove the signs from the chamber in compliance with our City Council rules. Chief Stewart, could you continue, please?
All guns are then later destroyed in accordance with local and federal guidelines. In December of 2022, the event produced 98 weapons, and this last month's event produced 73 weapons.
All right. If you could please leave the chamber in that case. There's, thank you very much. Would you please continue?
No problem. In sum, total, EPD has recovered 164 guns in 10 months. This includes gun buyback results as well as traditional street and investigative police efforts. The department hosted a Cadillac marking event. Officers physically get down on the ground and mark the converter with a heat-safe paint. Of the hundreds of Cadillac converters marked, we have received only a handful of those marked, later reported being stolen. In May, five of our police officers received Medal of Honors with the Illinois State Police. These men acted as heroes. Finely, each was presented with a Medal of Honor during a formal ceremony held in Springfield, Illinois I was proud to attend. Those officers are Adam Nawaka, Corey McCray, Carl Witt, Justin Conley, and Brandon Marks. Our training committee and in-house instructors conducted much-needed rapid deployment training over two-course day of majority of our sworn personnel. This type of training is necessarily and absolutely paramount. Additionally, we have conducted high-risk vehicle stops training, mandated safety act training, and supervisors have or will attend a course on adaptive leadership. In total, from October of 2022 to the end of August 2023, EPD staff has completed 12,000 hours in various trainings. We recently launched a new program called Are You Okay? Are You Okay is a way for us to check on our senior population, targeting those who live alone. InterESTIC community members can sign up to be a part of the program. A representative will simply call the senior once a week, check on him or her, and ask, "Are you okay?" If the senior is in need of any kind of assistance, we will respond accordingly. I've invested in technology advancements in an effort to modernize the police department. That's outside the building as well. The Evanston Police Mobile App, specific to the police department, is now available to the public through Google Play or the Apple Store. The app serves as a resource for information regarding recruiting, text-a-tip, press releases, and more. Also, the department is able to send out beneficial, quick, real-time push notifications to the public, for instance, we feel warranted. Situations such as road closures, areas to avoid due to active crime scene, alerts... Situations such as road closures, areas to avoid due to active crime scene, alerts, etc. We encourage all to download the app and check it out.
The Evanston Police Department is excited to announce the release of our smartphone app. The app is designed to keep residents and families within Evanston, Illinois, safe by providing the latest updates and information from the Evanston Police Department. Powered by thepoliceapp.com, the app greets users with a streamlined main menu to allow for seamless navigation of the app's many features. Some of those features include: contact us, submit a tip, and staff directory. The app also provides users with alerts and updates on emergencies or events that may impact their area. Scan the QR code or search for the Evanston Police Department in the Apple App Store or the Google Play Store to download this free app today.
Stay connected and informed, we have a variety of platforms that we use. The department's recruitment video was filmed from May through August of 2023. Members of our recruitment team worked jointly with the film company to ensure that the video best reflects who we are as a department. We have a variety, a very diverse and exclusive department and proudly boasts 21% women within our department. The national average is 13%. EPD continues to be ahead of the curve. The video can be found on the city's YouTube channel or scan the QR code. It has been a challenging year, yet productive and accomplished one. I am proud to be the chief and honored to work with the finest officers in law enforcement. This is my opportunity to thank my staff and acknowledge them publicly. Now, I have some representatives of the Police Department from the New Blue Fellowship for a presentation, and I think they're going to do absolutely wonderful.
Thank you, City Council, for having us. Great job, chief. I am here to introduce our New Blue Fellowship Community All-In Recidivism Project, also known as the Care Card, and in continuing on what the community needs and also keeping brevity in mind, we're going to try to stick to our notes even though we are very passionate about this project. And so, the ladies behind me are Detective Amanda Wright, Officer Anjali Daly, Detective Nina Griffin, and Officer Jackie Herrera, and I am Sergeant Tasha Wilson. And special shout-out to DC Secudi for this project as well. So, going off to the next slide, the who. What is New Blue Leadership Fellowship? And it's a national nonprofit organization that serves as an incubator to reform like-minded officers. The first cohort was all women, and that was intentional because we bring a different perspective to policing. And we were in this cohort with women from the LAPD all the way to Charleston, South Carolina. It went across the country. And New Blue provides fellows with networks, funding, and skills to develop long-term solutions in policing, and from police officers that believe in change from within, because sometimes we are a part of the, not a part of the conversation, but we want to be a part of the solution. And seven members of the EPD were selected to participate in New Blue, and that was Deputy Chief Melissa Secudi, myself, Sergeant Francesca Henderson, Officer Daly, Nina Griffin, Detective, and Officer Jackie Herrera, and Detective Amanda Wright. So, in recent years, the topic of police reform has been at the forefront of societal conversations. And in post-George Floyd era, it is prudent for officers and police departments to self-reflect and identify ways to improve community trust while encouraging restorative practices. As a part of the Fellowship Capstone Project, five members of EPD worked together developing a community-centered response to reducing recidivism. The focus is simple, to keep Evanston residents and people who are not from Evanston from returning to any police facility, while encouraging other communities to also be present for their citizens with resources and care. In order to take some pressures off what Evanston so graciously offers, we're hoping that this spreads across the North Shore and beyond. Introducing and implementing the Evanston Police Department Care Card will be a step in addressing recidivism within our community at the time of arrest. The Care Card allows the police department to honor people's dignity during an extremely vulnerable moment, and while finding the resources they need to minimize their return to the Evanston Police Department and the police departments across the country. We hope you enjoy this presentation.
So you heard about the what. I'm going to just tell you about the why and why we have the Care Card. So, recidivism is an issue that affects communities across the nation, including Evanston. This care project is an initiative designed for officers to help individuals voluntarily obtain resources when they first come into an arrest or detainment situation. So by implementing this Care Card, police officers will ask questions, they'll listen, and they will learn from their detainees and arrestees on what resources they need to improve outcomes for their future, and hopefully deterring them from committing future criminal activities. With the reasonable implementation of the Safety Act, there have been many changes to policing, and one of those primary changes to policing reform is that it will allow for better collaboration between first responders and community partners to help people who come into contact with police officers. This aligns, this change aligns directly with the Care Card. So our group, we have met with individuals that had been previously arrested and incarcerated, and we have listened to their stories. One common theme that stood out was that when they needed resources prior to and immediately after an arrest, they did not have it, and they didn't get it until their court case was over. We held focus groups with multiple social service agencies for feedback. And just as the Safety Act suggests, we have established those community stakeholders and partners. We have established them to collaborate with and help people obtain those resources that they said they needed, just to name a few. The Moran Center, YWCA, City of Evanston Services, Trilogy Behavioral Health. So why care? Because if it's not us at EPD, then who? If it's not now in Evanston, then when and where? Evanston PD has always been pioneers in policing, and we want to keep it that way.
Okay, so in front of you or up on the screen, and I think all of you are getting copies of it, is the actual Care Card. So using the Care Card will assist officers with identifying underlying issues that may have caused someone to be arrested, and then working with our local community partners, the care team can identify resources. This is voluntary. Nobody has to do it, but we will ask if people want to participate, and then once they agree or they decide they want to, we build upon the caretaking questions that we already ask when someone is in custody, and we ask more questions that are about real-life challenges such as food insecurity, employment concerns, mental health concerns, and many more. It's also designed to assist with a warm handoff to our community partners rather than just referring somebody or telling them to go, go to this organization, and they don't really have anybody to talk to. So we're working to build those relationships, so it's a warm handoff. It's just taking a few extra steps to assist people on a deeper level. The research, so through New Blue, we were afforded the opportunity to work with a research team, and working with Kyle Dobson and Andrea Dittman and their research team of Northwestern students, 239 Evanston residents were surveyed over the summer about the Care Card initiative. From all nine wards equally surveyed to get a representative sample. All the research assistants are trained, they actually went out and were walking up to people and asking questions. You can go to the next one. And this is what the research showed, is an over, pretty good support for what we're trying to do. And up on the slide, you can see the research was provided by Andrea Dittman and Kyle Dobson.
I'll quickly go over the how, how the Care Card works. Care Cards will be placed in the processing area to be used during an arrest. The arresting officer will gather the necessary information to complete the Care Card. Participation will be optional for the arrestee. However, internal EPD policy will mandate officers to ask all arrestees for their voluntary participation. The information collected on a Care Card will then be forwarded to a member of the care team to review.
Hi, I'm Officer Herrera with the Evanston Police Department. I'm going to run you through our Care Card. The purpose of this card is to collect information to assist individuals with connecting to available community resources in an effort to reduce repeat arrests. Participation is voluntary. Are you experiencing challenges in any of the following? Homelessness?
Yes.
Substance abuse?
Unfortunately, yes.
Employment?
Yes.
Do you have any mental health concerns?
There are some.
Would you like assistance with any of the above concerns?
That would be nice.
Are you open to a follow-up phone call or text from an Evanston care team member?
Yeah, that would be great.
Care starts during the arrest process for both in custody and compliant tickets. Once completed, the Care Card is forwarded to the care team. A member of the care team will contact the participant and also forward the information to the Health and Human Services Department. From there, connections are made with the appropriate local service agency to assist a participant with getting on track and reducing their chances of getting rearrested.
Okay, so I'll talk about the next steps, which will include for us to move forward. We want to continue.
Hi, I'm Officer Herrera with the Evanston Police.
We want to make sure that we're continuing to work with our community stakeholders. There will be a fine-to-in-implementation process, which includes feedback from participants and officers that are implementing the Care Card. Policy development includes standard operating procedures or general orders to make sure that the Care Card is being utilized appropriately, and also to ensure that officers are trained on it. And then we want to make sure we, we're trying to launch a pilot program by early 2024, and then we're also going to continue to track data. We want to make sure, I mean, sorry, we want to thank Chief Stewart for her support of New Blue and also New Blue for their continued support as we work to elevate the offerings of our department to the community that we proudly serve.
I just want to say thank you so much to the members of the New Blue team. Appreciate it. I couldn't help but notice the pride, I was looking at Chief Stewart, the pride at which she looks upon all of you and the important work that you all do. And I just want to say thank you so much to Chief Stewart for your dedication, your hard work, your leadership, and all the great things that you're doing in EPD, and thank you to all the members of EPD tonight for your incredible work.
Councilmember Harris.
So, we get a lot of complaints about what we do wrong in Evanston, and I want to be on the record and very clear, we made a good choice in hiring the chief. Her team is excellent. Some of you all were there before, some of you weren't. I am very appreciative of every time I call or ask a question, the help that I receive. It is always thoughtful and caring, and it's a hard job that you do. It's a very hard job, and I appreciate every day when you come to work, the realization that sometimes somebody might not, and you come to work the next day. So I want to say that I appreciate you all. It's a hard job. Evanston is a hard city. I've learned that sitting up here. So, again, I greatly appreciate the work that you all do and the care that you all give our residents, so thank you so much.
I just want to echo those thanks. On top of everything else, I think it says something about the culture of the department that so many people from the department showed up this evening. The belief that you all have in the shared mission and the support that you show each other and the partnership, I think is something that the whole city benefits tremendously from, and it doesn't go unnoticed, not only the good work that's been described, but just the number of EPD personnel who are sitting here showing their support and showing their commitment to the team. So, thank you very much to all of you. The next item on the agenda is communications from the city clerk.
Hi, I'm going to summarize public comment from Mike Vasilko. Oh, you want to read your comment? Go ahead.
Well, let's get to public comment.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Yeah, that's it. Yeah.
So this brings us to public comment. As mentioned earlier, fortunately, we do not have any Zoom public comment applicants this evening, so every public commenter who signed up, signed up online to speak in person, and each will be given three minutes. We begin with Karen Davis, who will be followed by Michael Vasilko, and then Denise Young.
And point of order is, you're coming up. I had at least one resident indicate that they were going to provide public comment virtually. They may not have known that. So if there are folks in the Zoom room, is there a way to notify them if they want to? I think they can raise their hand if they want to provide. If there's anyone there.
So there's no one who signed up, and there's no one in the Zoom room?
No one in the Zoom room. All right, that answers that. Thank you.
Ms. Davis, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Karen Davis. I live at 333 Dewey Avenue in the 8th Ward. I'm speaking in support of the ordinance 108022 to ban semi-trucks on our neighborhood streets. I've lived on Dewey for 30 years. I raised both my daughters there. I bought our house with the knowledge that there was a local wholesale greenhouse on the corner who used small, light trucks to transport products to and from their business. This was not an issue for the first 20 years or so. The last 10 years, this business has grown in our residential area. The huge semi-trucks regularly travel to and from the business during peak seasons. These semis contribute to air and noise pollution, damage our road infrastructure, and are dangerous to walkers, bikers, and drivers due to blocking intersections, difficulty turning on our narrow residential streets, and obstructing views of the streets. Many children walk and bike to schools in our area. A business should not be allowed to grow in a residential area to the detriment of the residents. Gleason's has three other locations in other towns, Northbrook, Lake Villa, and Grayslake, all of which are in industrial or more rural areas and have major access roads, not neighborhood streets, to access their greenhouses. This can easily be seen looking at Google Maps Street View. You can see where they're located, not in, directly in residential areas. Also on the website, the greenhouse in our neighborhood is listed as the office with the address 316 Florence, which actually is accessed from Dewey, not Florence. And the structure that is now used as the office was added to the property over the last 10 years. Nichelle Peugeot, who is a neighbor who lives across the street from the greenhouse, wasn't able to come tonight, but she forwarded me the agenda from our 2016 meeting with Ann Rainey and other members of the city government, which I forwarded to Alderman Reed. Many of the issues, same issues, were addressed at that time with little change. We were able to get no idling and parking restrictions signage, but it continued to be ignored. Over the last several years with Alderman Reed, we've redoubled our efforts to work to restore our peaceful neighborhood. I know there was a memo from David Stonebeck that there had been no neighborhood complaints since 6/22 meeting. That is untrue. I know many of us have called 311 and sent emails. The semi-trucks need to stop. That is what we're asking for, just a ban on the semi-trucks and going back to the days of using the small, light trucks, which they still do use. Thank you very much for the opportunity, and thank you, Alderman Reed.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Michael Vasilko, who will be followed by Denise Young, and then
Thanks for holding the meeting for me. Okay, so my comments for APW were the same as they are for this meeting. Why is, on item A5, Burke Engineering, they're doing alley survey services. So why are they the engineering firm that you went to? Being, there are many surveying firms, not only in Evanston but in other places nearby. Burke Engineering has not provided the Fountain Square explanation report that they promised to provide, or I should say the city council requested in June of this year and voted on as a whole, and said, "Staff, provide this report," and the staff agreed to do so, but months have gone by and there's been no report. So why hasn't staff delivered on the Burke explanation to city council members that was committed to in June of this year? committed to in June of this year? I would, I would say don't hire Burke for anything until they come clean on what happened at Fountain Square. And why is the funding for this item referred to as 2023 general obligation bonds? I don't know how many times I've said it, and I know many other people have said it, there are no 2023 general obligation bonds approved by the city. So that's, it keeps coming back like a bad coin, and people should stop making reference to it. Item A7, the purchase of more gas guzzling trucks and motorcycles. I repeat again, staff continues to demonstrate that they are climate change deniers. I don't know why that is, but it's clear by, at this point, that that's just their perspective. And why, again, is the funding for this item being referenced as 2024 funding when there has no budget for 2024 and council hasn't approved any funding for 2024? So that should just be removed as line item. In all these cases, you know, the city council can't spend money that hasn't been approved, and so these items should not show up on the agenda. Item A9, approval of non-union employee wage increases. I'd just like to know exactly who this is referring to? Is it administrators at the, you know, top of the food chain that want to raise, or is it people that actually do work? In which case, I would, I would support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Denise Young, who will be followed by Rebecca Luzader, and then Ash Nisan.
Hello, good evening. I am here, as well as several other neighbors from Dewey, in support of Alderman Reed's ban on trucks. So my wife and I moved into the neighborhood about three years ago. We did research on Cleason's. Obviously, it's right there, you could see it. So we researched hours, we asked the prior owners, have you had any issues with them? And they said, no, they've been great neighbors. And that is true for, for a good part of our experience, but unfortunately, again, the 18-wheelers are a massive issue. So as you all probably have seen in some of our descriptions, and as we talked previously on the different meeting that we came to last year, they, they come and idle at all hours of the night. So I think their hours generally end around 4:00. So they'll show up at 8:00, 11:00, midnight, 2:00, I think, 6:00 in the morning. So they're, we're not sure exactly what that miscommunication is with them. As we've previously discussed, a lot of the drivers of the 18-wheelers seem to be a third-party vendor, and so there have been lots of efforts to try to rectify that, but it continues to be an issue. Every time it is an issue, we do call through Room 1 and the non-emergency police to report it, and they do come. And when they're still there, I believe that they ticket them and talk to them. But there are just, again, a lot of issues that, you know, for instance, and I think somebody else will talk about this, they'll come and they'll park in the street, and then in the morning, it's often the case that they're blocking school buses that are there to pick up children. And 18-wheelers parked at 2:00 AM outside your bedroom is not a fun thing to experience, right? So that is not something that we were advised about, prepared for, saw when we were there before we even bought the house, right? We've seen the small trucks, and that was our understanding of what, how they transported their, their materials and what they need. I don't want Cleason's to go out of business. I support them as, as a small business, but the semi trucks are a massive problem, so I do support the proposal on the ban. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Rebecca Luzader, who will be followed by Ash Nisan.
Rebecca Luzader, I am the wife that she speaks of. We bought our house about three years ago, as she mentioned. It was not a problem when we first, sorry? Ah, okay. Thank you. So when we moved in, it wasn't a problem originally, the first couple of months, and then they got into their busy season. We've had several issues with the 18-wheelers. We are the house, actually, that's right next to them on the block, so we are right next to where they store all of their soil and fertilizer, so we get all of that loan onto us, so we get the garbage, we get all of the great things. But the 18-wheelers have totally been the biggest issue because we can't leave for work in the morning. The 18-wheelers are blocking, we'll have to go talk, we'll call 311, they're not coming right away, so it's a really, really big nuisance. I think the idling overnight is also really a big nuisance. The trucks are massive, and so they vibrate. You can actually feel them in the bedroom. You can hear the windows actually shaking. They're not supposed to be idling, and they are. I know that they're cool trucks, so they keep them on, and so you'll just hear that going all night until they open the business the next day. They are also using the residential streets to do loading and unloading, so they will completely block the, the traffic, so cars are not able to go by, school buses are not able to go by. It's, it's a really big challenge, and we would like to specifically block the 18-wheelers. Again, we support the business. Small trucks are fine, they're not blocking or parking in front of people's driveways. It's truly just the 18-wheelers that cannot actually completely go in, because, again, they are using their parking lot for storage, so their employees are not parking in their parking lot, they also can't bring the trucks into their parking lot, because that's where all of their excessive storage is, and so all of that work happens in the actual roadway. And, yes, I would like to petition that we block the trucks, the semi trucks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ash Nisan.
I'm calling, or I came by to, to support, actually, Cleason's business model. You know, they were there before we, before we moved in. That family's been in business in that location for 50 or 60 years. I was well aware of, of them being there, and we bought the house right across the street. We actually have two frontages to them because we have a, a double lot, essentially. For any time there is inconvenience, they have actually been more than kind and taken care of any problems that they've created. If there was a truck that was blocking, I would just talk to the truck driver and they'd move the truck. One time, one semi, like, couldn't back in right, and he kind of ran over the, the grass in the parkway. I, I went over and talked to Tom, and he said, you know, let me fix it, and he came out and he fixed it right away. There's not no problems, but they've managed these problems quite well, and I don't, you know, they, they've changed their business model dramatically to accommodate the needs of our neighborhood, and I don't understand the animus against, you know, this business that's been paying their taxes and supporting our, our community for many, many decades. They actually have a truck diversion program, so they have a deal with Home Depot, and this is arranged with the Evanston Police. They have a community liaison officer that works with them. They stage the trucks at Home Depot, and then they bring them in on a, on a schedule. Does occasionally a trucker screw up and come and park there when they're not supposed to? They're supposed to have parked at the Home Depot? Yes, occasionally that happens, but it's part of living in a community. We all have to accommodate each other, and I'm just asking that you all consider accommodating this business that is a good actor in our community. They, the semi trucks are no different than the box trucks that they use, they're just longer. There is no parking on their side of the street directly in front of my house. That's where those trucks typically park. Again, does occasionally a truck driver mess something up? Yes, occasionally that happens, but that's not their practice. Mr. Cleason and their family have really bent over backwards. They did get another location, I think in Northbrook, to help break down things so that they were bringing fewer trucks in, and again, they've worked on a plan in concert with the Evanston Police to make this work just fine, and it would, it would be sad, in my estimation, there's a lot of sort of anti-business animus that, that happens, and I get that it's inconvenient and sometimes that you have to wait a minute to get around, but there's never been anybody that's been mean about it, they just are trying to run a business, and I would just ask that we consider letting them do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for the evening.
I'm so sorry, I didn't submit last Thursday to the public comment. I came here with my kids, which is not easy. It's definitely registered. I submitted it last Thursday.
Well, I'll let, I'll let you do it, given the circumstances, but if you could circle up with the clerk's office after, because your name is not on the list, so if you want to speak in the future, I want to make sure that you sign up properly.
Thank you, Mayor, and I really appreciate it. My husband is traveling, and it was clearly not easy for me to bring my children, one of which has special needs, but I did because we feel so strongly about the safety aspect. I 100% support a local business. We're proud to live by a longstanding local business, but we live at 322 Dewey, which is one of the houses across from the parking lot, and the semi trucks have been a real problem. I don't agree with my neighbor that they have been accommodating. There have been multiple times since last spring, when my daughter's school bus to her Head Start program was not able to get through. We had to go up and speak to the drivers, they didn't always respond. I saw, there's a young man down our street who's maybe seventh or eighth grade, and he has special needs and has a Bright Lift transport. I've seen that bus twice not be able to get down Dewey and have to back up and go around the block. We have had semis, we've had maybe two parked north, two parked south, I've seen them parked on Mulford, and they're all trying to get into this parking lot, and because a lot of us, ourselves included, don't have garages, we park on the street, and so we can't get through. Sometimes they spill stuff. I'm fine with the panel trucks. They unload it, they, they load up at 6:45 every morning, it's great, they leave, but the semis are an issue. And, yeah, I would just like you to consider blocking those particular vehicles. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comment for the evening, and brings us to the consent agenda. I'm told that we are removing items A12, A13, A14, A15, and A16 from the consent agenda, all for potential introduction and action to occur this evening. Except for those five items, is there anything else that folks would like to remove from the consent agenda? A2 and R1, please. A2 and R1. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move the consent agenda minus the items that have been pulled.
Does the motion still apply, councilmember?
Yeah, yep, I'll still move it forward.
Councilmember Reed moves adoption of the entire consent agenda except for A1, A2, A12, A13, A14, A15, A16, A18, and R1. Councilmember Nguyen seconds. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the consent agenda is approved. This moves us now to item A1. Is there a motion on item A1?
I will move item A1, approval of the City of Evanston payroll bills list and credit card activity.
Councilmember Reed moves approval of the city's payroll bills list and credit card activity. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
I'm sorry.
Payroll?
Oh, this was A1? I'm sorry. Thank you for calling me out. I abstain on A1. I was thinking about trucks.
Would the clerk just?
Oh, good, I'm glad.
Would the clerk just start the roll from the, from the jump again to make sure that I don't miscount for a change?
Thank you all.
Councilmember Nusma?
Abstain.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
With eight voting in favor, none voting against, and one abstention, the motion carries and the various items are approved. This brings us to item A2. Councilmember Reed, would you care to make a motion?
Yes, I will move item A2, approval of the BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity.
Councilmember Reed moves approval of the BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffredin?
I abstain.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
With eight voting in favor, none voting against, and one abstention, the motion carries and the credit card activity is approved.
I will move suspension of the rules for items A12, A13, A14, and A15.
But not A16?
Oh, and A16, sorry.
A second.
Councilmember Reed moves suspension of the rules so that items A13, A12, A14, A15, and A16 may be passed, may have final action taken this evening, notwithstanding their ordinance is being introduced this evening. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion receives the required unanimous majority, and the rules are suspended. Councilmember Reed?
I will move item A12, ordinance 81023, authorizing the sale of city-owned real property at 1808 Hovland Court.
Maybe we can move them all together.
I mean, I'm fine to move them all together, they're just unrelated, so I will move.
So is the consent agenda.
Sure. I will move ordinance 90023, amending city code section 10, 115C, schedule VC of Evanston City Code, three-way stops, three-way stops at Grand Street and Cowper Avenue. I will also move ordinance 91023, amending city code section 3-4-6C to increase the number of Class D liquor licenses from 22 to 23 for Egg Harbor Cafe at 1701 Maple. I will move ordinance 92023, amending city code section 346D to increase the number of Class D liquor licenses from 71 to 72 for the Fat Charlotte at 2902 Central Street. And finally, I will move ordinance 93023, amending city code section 346D to increase the number of Class D liquor licenses from 72 to 73 for Resis Restaurant at 1557 through 59 Sherman Avenue.
Councilmember Reed moves final passage of ordinances 81-0-23, 90-0-23, 91-0-23, 92-0-23, and 93-0-23. Councilmember Harris, seconds, pursuant to the suspension of the rules. This vote is for both introduction and action for the five aforementioned ordinances. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and all five ordinances are passed.
I will move ordinance 108022, amending city code section 10, 1113, schedule 13.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of ordinance 108-0-22. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Reed, followed by Nusma.
Yeah, I will just add a little light. I think the residents who have brought this to my attention over, I think from the beginning of the term, I think this might have been a day-one email that, that we got, and we've worked, the police department and fire department have worked with the neighbors and just had many conversations with Cleason, Mike Rivera, who is the parking, or who at the time was the parking manager, had conversations. the time was the parking manager, had conversations. We, as was noted by a neighbor, there have been attempts to try to solve this issue by creating loading zones at Home Depot, at James Park. And it seems that this has continued over even with those efforts. And again, if you note, what's unique about this ordinance compared to what we just adopted, it has 10822. This was introduced over a year ago, and we held it, maybe not over a year, but it was introduced quite a while ago, and we've held it over to allow Cleason the opportunity to become better neighbors, and it just has not happened. And I'm sure that if this was happening in any other neighborhood, in one of your wards, and there were refrigerated semi trucks sitting out in front of residential neighborhoods, that folks would, you know, seek to advocate for their residents. These restricted streets exist in a number of places throughout the city. This would not be the only street, residential street, that has a restriction. And so looking forward to support from my colleagues to ensure that we are protecting these neighbors and their well-being in their homes, but also still allowing Cleason to operate in the manner that they had 10, 15 years ago, before their operation grew to the size that it is. And looking forward to them continuing to operate in the neighborhood, but just in a manner that is more conducive to a residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma, followed by Saffredin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to just be clear what this ordinance would do. And as I understand it, it would prohibit trucks, big trucks, big meaning 8,000 pounds or more, on the streets in question. But we have elsewhere in City Code some language which allows trucks to go off of a truck route within whatever quarter mile, half mile of their destination. Would that clause be a loophole that would enable trucks to continue doing what they're doing? I guess that's a question for legal.
I need to research and look that up right now, but I'll see if I can get you an answer quickly, but.
I suspect that language is related specifically to truck routes. But I'm concerned that if we pass this ordinance, they might be able to get away with what they're doing anyway.
If I, can I respond to?
Councilmember Reed has probably done his homework here.
Sure. I am going to seek Attorney Brian George's opinion there on if folks were allowed to do that. I've operated under the assumption that that is quite possible. But what this will put in place, since trucks are prohibited whenever law enforcement, one, I think it is possible that, no, they will not be allowed, because it is specifically trucks prohibited. But in the case that they are allowed to use that loophole, as you say, this will certainly stop the idling, because law enforcement will be able to immediately tell a truck that, you know, if you're idling here, if you're waiting here, if you're stopped here, you cannot stop here, whether it's five minutes or not, this is a street where trucks are prohibited, you're able to make the delivery and just keep moving.
Okay. I'm sympathetic to the neighbors. I certainly wouldn't want a refrigerated truck parked out of my house at 3:00 a.m. At the same time, I'm also reluctant to make life more difficult for a business in Evanston in an environment where that's an increasing concern. And I understand that there are also some potential legal ramifications, you know, should we enact this ordinance. So I'd like to hear from our legal department from that perspective as well.
It's entirely speculative, but I think it does potentially open up a possibility of litigation if this ordinance, there could be an argument that this ordinance is cutting into their business and their existing business and that they've already made. They've, you know, they've operated their business in this manner for a period of time, they've grown accustomed to it, they've basically like formed their operations around how the truck routes are. And if this ordinance bites into their business in a significant way, it could potentially be an argument that, you know, it's cutting into their business.
Right. And so I guess I would prefer that we could work something out without having to pass an ordinance. And I'm just curious, when was the last go-around with the management and how have things, how do things stand with them? And I'd like to hear from them directly, too, if possible. So I guess that's a question for Councilmember Reed.
Yes. Can I address all of that when I come back around? If you don't mind.
Sure. That's all I have for now. Thanks.
Councilmember Saffredin, followed by Burns.
Yeah, along those lines, I just wanted to confirm, there's no representative of the business here? All right. I can't ask questions there. And this is just for introduction tonight. This will come back in two weeks.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns.
Attorney George, in the opinion that we have from you, First Amendment takings, it talks about for taking of, taking of its property. And I interpret that different than cutting into someone's business or revenue. So can you help me understand how this may be interpreted as taking of property?
So like actual physical property is pretty self-explanatory, but something such as, I think of like the example of somebody that's bought a property that they use for rentals, or with the understanding that they're going to be using it as a rental, and then there's, they make significant improvements, spend a lot of money on the building, you know, when, and then the zoning on that building changes, or the zoning in that area changes. There is case law indicating that depending on the amount of, how much they've depended on the zoning in terms of how much they spent, much money they spent, and, you know, the expectations that they had on the zoning and having that kind of pulled out from under them can constitute a taking.
Okay. Even if it doesn't, you know, eliminate their ability to operate their business, if it just hinders it in some way that they may be able to overcome by modifying certain business practices that still you believe could be interpreted as a taking of property?
I mean, like I said, it's such a fact-specific thing. It's a lot harder to prove for something that's not a physical taking of property. I'm not going to weigh in on the merits of any claim of a taking, I'm just saying it's a possibility.
Okay. Yeah, I, you know, I certainly would, will support, if this is just introduction, would support advancing it. If this were for action today, I would only support a temporary ban. And, but I do think it's very troubling that the owners have not reached out to the city or responded to the city if they haven't, to work with us. I did reach out to a member of the family who's a part of the business several months ago. Tried my best to organize a meeting between Councilmember Reed and their family. I was told that they would respond and get back to us, and they haven't, as far as I understand. So I am incredibly frustrated that they have not responded. As Councilmember Reed said, if this did happen in my ward, I will 100% want to advocate for the best interest of the community members. In most cases, when things do come up in the fifth ward, I'm able to reach out to the business owner, they meet with me, we figure something out. And the fact that that's not happening here is very troubling to me. So I will support moving this forward in hopes that that will encourage the business to come forward and try to continue a conversation about this. Thank you, Chair.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. So yes, I also certainly wouldn't want to undermine a longstanding business like Cleason. I can sympathize with the neighbors. In the first ward, we have an issue of idling semis at night, and staff has been very responsive in terms of upping the enforcement. However, it has taken an inordinate amount of staff time to stay on top of this and to really try to curtail the loud nuisance of the idling trucks. So this evening, I will support this. I would like to hear from Cleason to understand the impact to the company, and since we aren't hearing from them this evening, I would like to go ahead and move forward with this and hope that someone will be present at our next meeting to discuss impact. Thank you.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Reed with 2 minutes and 50 seconds left.
Thank you. I appreciate Councilmember Burns, you highlighting that story there. Staff has had many conversations with Cleason, as I, Cleason, Cleason, as I noticed, as I noted earlier, you know, this has been on hold since 2022. We're almost in 2024. You know, my goal was, I was hoping that we wouldn't get to the point where we would need to move forward with introduction. We, I asked the committee to move this forward to send a very clear message to Cleason that you got to work with us, you've got to move these trucks out of the neighborhood, and you got to revert back to, they have two other locations. This location that happens to be in a residential neighborhood needs to operate as if it is in a residential neighborhood. And even with this now coming in before us for introduction, they have not been responsive. There have been some efforts to make improvements, but it has not gone far enough. And this is a last resort to bring relief to residents who are concerned about the safety of their families, of their children, and their ability, their ability to go to work and access things without being late. And so I do hope that someone from Cleason will be here at our next meeting, or that myself and staff can have a meeting with them between now. But I must say that I'm, given that this has been held out for a year, this is the, you know, we, this came to, I believe, council previously, and we decided to table it then until this meeting, and there just has not been action from them. So I'm not hopeful, but I'm certainly willing to continue to engage. And I just want to note that I appreciate Attorney George's, Brian George's legal memo there. I will say that also, as Attorney George noted, that it is, you know, speculative and that these are really fact-specific cases. There isn't direct case law on this. This council makes adjustments to our ordinances all the time that could have effect on someone's business. If we change a truck route, if we eliminate a truck route, that could have a similar effect. And in no way is this banning Cleason from operating. It is simply saying that you have to operate in a manner that is appropriate for the residential neighborhood in which you reside. Thank you. And I appreciate the support of my colleagues tonight.
Once again, no one is requesting to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Nusma with 3 minutes left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since this is for introduction tonight, I'm going to support it tonight, and hopefully that will send the message to the business that the city council is serious, and ideally we'd be able to work something out before this comes back to us for action.
I would, oh, sorry.
So at this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first or second time, so we'll go back to Councilmember Reed with 20 seconds left.
Yes, very quickly. I don't know if it's appropriate to modify this. Well, I'm going to modify this motion instead of it having it come back at our next regular meeting, which is September, or October, what? Manager Stowe?
Hold on one second. Brian, it's not the case, is it, that our rules obligate an ordinance that has been introduced to then automatically be on the next regular meeting agenda for action, is it? Because if, if I'm right about that, you, we can just, I'm happy to agree to skip a meeting and, or, you know, rather than make a motion and vote on the motion and whatever.
I was just going to amend the initial motion.
And you were hoping to skip one meeting, or?
Yeah, my goal is to skip one meeting, have this come back, that'll give us a bit more time to speak with the folks and if we're.
So here's, what I would recommend, don't do that.
All right, I will.
And as the chair, I commit that I'll just pull this off the agenda next time with everyone's permission, so no one thinks any funny business is going on. And it'll be, if it, presuming this vote that's about to occur passes, this will be then, instead of on the October 9th agenda for action, it'll be on the October 23rd agenda for action.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Will the clerk please take the role on ordinance 108-0-22 for introduction?
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Saffredin.
Aye.
Councilmember Revell.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda-Caddes.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the ordinance is introduced and will appear on the October 23rd, 2023 agenda for action. Councilmember Hadda-Caddes, would you care to make a motion on item R-2? R-1?
I move ordinance 56023, adding Title I, Chapter 13, Section 5, Small Donor Matching System for Fair Elections.
Councilmember Hadda-Caddes moves passage of ordinance 56-0-23. Councilmember Reed, seconds. Councilmember Saffredin.
I have a couple of questions, and I'm not sure who the appropriate person to ask is, if it's you, or Juan, or Elizabeth. But I just want to make sure I understand that this is general fund money, correct, that we could spend for any purpose? This isn't a special fund that's created for supporting elections?
Ms. Kaplan is the, you know, perhaps since it seems like they're going to be serious of technical questions, why doesn't someone from Reform for a Law come forward to speak to those?
Yeah, I guess I have a question about specifically how we're doing this, and a couple of questions about the actual concept. So I'm not sure if you're, who the correct, I mean, this is money, this is taxpayer money that, this isn't a checkoff or anything that anybody opts into. This is money that we could spend for anything else we want, but we're choosing to spend it this way?
That's correct.
Okay. And then I see there's some, so the money goes to the candidate or the candidate's committee?
Candidate's committee.
Okay. And so the candidate's committee is the pastor. Is there any restriction on place, or pastor may be the wrong word, but I mean, obviously we, the money goes to them so that they can spend it. What are the restrictions on things that they can spend it on? Are there, is there anything in here that requires?
There's an extensive list, Councilman, of things that are restricted that they cannot spend it on. It parallels the list under the state statute that politicians are restricted from spending campaign funds on generally.
Right. But like in a smaller, like if they're going to spend money on printing, there's no requirement that they use an Evanston business for printing. Or if they're going to spend it on consulting, there's no requirement that they have an Evanston consultant. They can spend the money, they can choose vendors as they wish without any restriction.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Councilmember Reed.
Actually, would still really appreciate the technical assistance. So I was reading through this, and to be clear, one question I have outstanding, let's say we have a candidate for mayor who has $100,000 in their account. Are they able to use their existing funds on top of the matching funds? So if those funds were raised before this ordinance was put into place, are they able to use those funds for the election?
My understanding is yes. They are, it does not require everyone to start out at zero. Existing funds that are in people's accounts can be used as they could in any event.
There is, sorry. There is a restriction, though, that money, if they want to participate in the program, any contribution they, they took over $150, they would have to return within that election cycle. So you could, they couldn't collect a bunch of $6,000 or $12,000 contributions before the election and then start taking public funds? No.
That's, that's true, but that only applies within that election cycle. So if there's a carryover value from a prior election cycle, my understanding is they are permitted to continue to use that money.
With that in mind, I mean, I would like to amend this to, to bar that. I mean, one, let me, because there's also a provision, as I was reading through, that says that there's a cap on the spending of, you know, if, what is it called? Rank choice voting is in place, the cap Rank choice voting is in place, the cap would be $160,000. If rank choice voting is not in place, $200,000. So would that cap also apply to funds raised prior to...
If you've got somebody with significant funds that precede the previous election cycle, then yes.
I would... I'm going to move to amend... I don't have the language in writing. I'll see if there's a second, and I'll put it in writing. But I would like us to move... Again, this is a voluntary program, and so anyone who chooses to participate to commit not to using more than what they raised in that particular election cycle.
There are expenditure limits on what participating candidates can spend.
Yeah, that's what I was... Okay, so then that's what I was just asking about.
Yes, that's already there. They're already limited in how much they can spend.
So a candidate can only spend 160 if we have ranked choice voting?
Right.
Two hundred thousand without?
Right. Correct.
Okay. I didn't notice any of this being tied to inflation, and so it seems like... Go ahead.
There is an inflation rider provision in the statute.
Okay.
The ordinance, sorry.
Okay. I didn't see that, but I'm not claiming to have seen everything in the ordinance. I also, I want to respond to my questions last time. You know, one, I'm not looking to punish the non-poor, whatever that means, but I am looking to support folks who are marginalized. And again, I appreciate you sent over your opinion. I think it was shared with everyone here. My only concern is that this whole program would be unconstitutional if it were not for the voluntary nature of candidates choosing to participate. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. And so if that is the case, why could... What changes if a candidate is choosing to participate in this? Why would that... Why would limiting the matching funds to low-income residents or marginalized residents? Again, it's not race-based, it's not anything that, you know, has strict scrutiny. It is income-based. I don't see...
It does... Sorry. Sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead, finish. It is subject to strict scrutiny under the Supreme Court precedent. And your question is a fair question, but you're directing it to the wrong people. You need to direct it to the U.S. Supreme Court, whose rulings I set out in that memo, and that's where the issue arises.
No, I understand. So certainly because it's freedom of speech, it's First Amendment, it's strict scrutiny there, but the port... And right, that's why this whole program would be unconstitutional if it were a mandate and not a voluntary program. My question specifically, because we are... The specific aspect about limiting the funds to low-income residents, certainly the fact that they're low-income residents would not trigger strict scrutiny in and of itself. That seems like that's something that would pass, you know, a regular muster. I forget exactly... It's been a while since I've been thinking about this.
I can't answer from an equal protection standpoint. I haven't looked at that. So I can't... I won't speculate. But when you get into this area, as the cases I pointed out in the memo stress, then you are in a strict scrutiny area, and the Supreme Court has said that basically leveling the playing field, which would be the rationale for that kind of provision, is not a legitimate state interest according to the Supreme Court.
Mandate. And in most of those cases that you sent over were mandates where it wasn't...
The last case in the memo, the third case, Arizona case, is a voluntary system where they still tell it was unconstitutional because it was tied to the amount of money that opposing candidates spent.
Yeah, that's quite different than matching funds for, you know, low-income residents and not wealthy residents. That was quite literally creating a level playing field, if I'm not mistaken, where candidates essentially had to raise a similar amount, or the state would match funds to get candidates to a similar amount. That, I can see the clear differentiation there where the state's saying, well, if residents are saying that they clearly prefer this person by using their voice and contributions to support that candidate, it's not the role of the state to equalize. I think this is very different in that we would be matching low-income residence funds only, which, you know, I don't know if I'm going to get support here, but I think that is completely an option. I think we would be missing a good opportunity to improve this program and ensure that we are encouraging candidates to reach out to folks that they traditionally do not reach out to, that are traditionally low propensity voters in Evanston elections. And by moving forward with this current program, we would essentially, yes, I agree, Mayor Biss had really good points, and my time is up, I will wrap up now, but Mayor Biss had really good points that, you know, there are strict contribution limits here that will be put in place and that candidates will voluntarily comply with. But, you know, on the flip side of this, this will be the city using our limited funds to subsidize, very likely primarily, the contributions of folks who can afford to make an appropriate contribution. And I wish we went down a route of using our limited funds to encourage folks who don't traditionally participate to participate. Thank you.
Councilmember Hadekatis. I was just going to answer one of his questions, but... At this time, no one is requesting to speak for the first time, so we'll go back to Councilmember Sufferton with three minutes and 45 seconds left.
This is a quick one, just because the word voluntary was used. It's voluntary to participate, but on the contribution side, there is no opt-out for any resident. They're not volunteering. They are participating in this because they pay taxes. Okay.
Yes.
All right, great. I just wanted to make sure I understood that completely. So you can volunteer to receive money, but you cannot volunteer not to contribute money.
I do not know of any check-off on the tax form for either the federal or state government that works like that, Councilman.
Great. Thank you.
Once again, no one is asking to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Hadekatis with four minutes and 58 seconds left.
I was just going to say, it is... You cannot opt-out. Just... And I'll just clarify, the number is roughly a dollar per person, so...
Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Sufferton?
No.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Hadekatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
With six voting in favor and two voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 56-0-23 is passed. This brings us now to call of the wards. Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. October office hours and ward meeting on Tuesday, October 3rd, 7:00 p.m. at Robert Crown is the ward meeting. And Saturday, October 14th, 10:00 to noon at Berry Pike Cafe is office hours. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Sufferton? Councilmember Ravel?
No report.
Councilmember Reed?
Ward meeting this Thursday, 6:00 p.m. at Robert Crown. We'll have Assessor Fritz Kegy to come and discuss property taxes and the work that his office has been doing. We'll also have representatives from pallet shelters to discuss their shelter solutions that could be used for undocumented... Or for asylum seekers and for folks who are unhoused in our community. And then we'll have Officers Galindo and Brooks there to discuss crime statistics and trends within the eighth ward. And we invite folks from all over the city to attend the session with Assessor Kegy. Just one... We had a protest here today of sorts, and I just want to encourage Evanstonians to... Encourage folks to be strategic in how you make your voices heard in a way that will have impact. So I encourage folks to be more thoughtful about the way that they protest and try to urge this body to do what folks believe is right. Maybe it's not the place of an elected official to tell folks how to protest, but I do think there are certainly more effective ways than what happened today, which really was just more disruptive than anything else. Thank you.
Councilmember Hadekatis.
Ninth ward, office hours Friday, the 29th. I will be at Reprise Roasters from 9:00 till 11:00 a.m., and I will be joined by Sergeant Brown from EPD.
Councilmember Kelly.
We'll have our first ward in-person public safety meeting on Tuesday, October 3rd with Officer Brian Russ. We're meeting at, on the patio of the Graduate if weather... The weather's okay. So next Tuesday at 4:00. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
Thank you. The makeup meeting for... That I missed when I was ill will be Thursday at 7:30 via Zoom.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes, third ward office hours on Thursday, October 5th, from 7:30 to 9:30 at Brothers K. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, Councilmember Newsma is recognized to make a motion.
Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, 120/2C, a move that the city council convened into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel and minutes review. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are five ILCS 120/2C 1 and 21.
Second.
Councilmember Newsma moves to the city council, move into executive discussion to discuss the items just mentioned. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Newsma? Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Sufferton? Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadekatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and at 7:43 p.m., the city council moves into executive session to begin immediately in the council member library.